Karen?
Yeah. Maybe you didn't want to see something you want to see. Oh, yeah.
All right, welcome everybody to the points and council meeting. Tonight, we're going to move into our regular meeting shortly, but prior to doing that, we have a very special recognition today and proclamation regarding national service recognition today, and we have a bunch of folks up here with us, but I'm going to turn it over to Karen Reese. Karen, tell us what's going on.
Thank you. The U.S. Conference of Mayors and the Corporization for National Community Service announced the Second Annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service to be held on April 1st, 2014. We want to highlight the impact of national service and thank individuals in AmeriCorps and Senior Corps programs across the country who engage citizens in improving lives and strength communities. Let me introduce you to our community partners. I am Karen Reese from Visiting Nurse Services of Iowa, and I'm in charge of the Senior Corps Program, Foster Grandparent Program, and I have with me...
Hello, my name is Pam Hamer. I work at King School.
Mary Duckworth, and I work as a science student at King Elementary.
And?
Judy Vandermark at South Union.
And?
Karen Sullivan, I'm with Visiting Nurse Services.
And we also have Julia from the Senior Companion Program from Visiting Nurse Services, and I'll let her introduce her people.
Julia Tiedemann.
Why don't you speak into the microphones?
Okay.
You're on TV. You're what?
I'm Julia Tiedemann, and I'm the Director for the Senior Companion Program at Visiting Nurse Services of Iowa, and the following people that I will point out are Senior Companion volunteers.
Art Nolan. Bruce Connor.
Margaret Willis.
Connie Boucher.
Judy Gaylord.
Thank you, and... Our state officer from the Corporization for National and Community Service is Vicki Hoover Williamson. She really was first on my list. Also, the Des Moines Public Schools.
Allison Metzger. I'm the Tutoring Coordinator for Des Moines Public School and AmeriCorps.
I'm Flotna McMillan. I am the Assistant Success Coordinator of the Public Schools.
And I'm Al Canada. I'm at Mount Hill School, and I'm a service learning.
And the United Way of Central Iowa.
Shirley Burgess.
And I'm Joy Tomo. I'm the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program Coordinator.
In Des Moines, we actively engage over 350 Senior Corps volunteers and 100 AmeriCorps members in efforts to address important community needs like improving educational support, helping families achieve financial stability, providing assistance so seniors and the disabled can continue to live independently, supporting veterans and military families, helping communities recover from national disasters, and preserving the environment. National service participants serve in more than 1,000 locations across Iowa, including Des Moines, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations so that they're vital to our economic and social well-being. Senior Corps volunteers and AmeriCorps members increase the impact of organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing additional volunteers. Please help us recognize the positive impact of national service participations in our city and thank those who serve and volunteer.
Karen, thank you. And I want to thank each and every one of you, not only for being here today, but for the work that you do in coordination of volunteers all around our city, because really, that's what makes our city and the state of Iowa work. The proclamation reads as follows: "Service to others is a hallmark of Iowa's character and central to how we meet our challenges, and the nation's mayors and community leaders are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet community needs." And whereas Des Moines' 90 AmeriCorps members and 218 Senior Corps volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service participants serve more than 1,100 locations across Iowa, including Des Moines, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas Iowa's 1,200 AmeriCorps members and 6,200 Senior Corps participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve through their direct service and by recruiting and managing 30,540 additional volunteers who serve another 1,044,960 hours in our state. And where the Corporization for National and Community Service and Iowa Commission of Volunteer Service share a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across America to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, April 1st, 2014. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of our citizens and our city council, do hereby proclaim April 1, 2014, is National Service Recognition Day, and encourage our residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. Let's give these folks a great big hand. You ready?
Yes.
Can you put it to the camera?
In time.
Get in time. Can you see everybody?
Do you want to... No, this way. There you go.
Thank you so much.
You're doing well. Somebody posted, and the only comment was, Joe, the only comment was, "These guys look well fed."
All right, I want to welcome everybody to the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting of March 24th. I'm going to ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, Item 2 is approving the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency One-Year Agency Plan, Board Communication Number 14-110. Is there anybody in the audience to address any of the items on this communication and this agency plan? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 3 is authorizing the release of mortgage and related security instruments for the 5H Affordable Home Ownership Program for the following. A is David A. Mills, 2707 College Avenue. It's Board Communication Number 14-113. B is Arthur J. McGelwee, 1240 East 24th Street. Board Communication Number 14-112. And C is Vicki Elkarney of 1305 East 28th Street. Board Communication Number 14-111. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to any of the three of these?
If not, I'll move it.
All right. Board Member Mahaffey moves three: A, B, and C. Any discussion? On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Item 4 is approving the conveyance of 2505 Southwest 12th Street, city-owned Municipal Housing Agency property pursuant to Affordable Home Ownership Program. Board Communication Number 14-114. Is there anybody here to speak to approving the conveyance of 2505 Southwest 12th?
Who's getting that license there?
Seeing none, could we have a motion?
Move.
Item's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 5 is, would like to have a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We said adjourn. We'll transition shortly right into the city council meeting. Prior to that, we're going to have a quick message from our own council member, Joe Gatto.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here today. We just be with all of us. Bless this day. Give us the knowledge and the patience to make great decisions for our city. In your name, we pray this. Amen.
Amen.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order, and first item on the agenda, we'll ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Any discussions? Been moved. By the way, those of you who are looking, the consent agenda items, Item 5 has been withdrawn. Community Development Department wants further study on that item. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. These are Items 3 through 33. These are routine items, and they'll all be enacted by one roll call vote, with the exception of anything that is pulled off either by a city council member or a member of the audience. Again, Items 3 through 33. Item 4C, Councilmember Gray wishes to speak. Item 6, Councilmembers County and Moore vote no. Item 8, Councilmember Gatto votes no and wishes to speak. Item 20, Gatto and Hensley wish to speak. Item 24, Hensley wishes to speak. Item 25 and 26, Councilmember Moore wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anybody in the audience would like to have polled for further discussion or clarification?
I also have a quick comment on 8 as well.
All right.
It's already been polled.
Okeydoke. Could we have a motion then for the balance?
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item 4C. Item 4 is approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following, and C would be Galaxy's Bar and Grill at 2718 Douglas Avenue. Council member Gray.
Thank you. Last month, they were here and they had their license revoked. They're coming to us with a new application, and I have some questions. I got, both the surrounding neighborhood groups are opposed to this business. They've got concerns about noise, parking, and safety. Is the applicant here? I would like to defer this to next month, so we can at least ask the applicant some questions about how they're going to run this place. Like I say, I've got letters from all the neighborhood group, the neighbors around there, and there's a lot of concerns. So, I'd like to defer it to next month, next council meeting.
And request that the applicant appear?
Yes, thank you.
Seven yes?
Thank you.
All right, takes us to Item 8. These are public improvements. Item 8 is ordering the construction of the Fire Department Administration Parking Lot, receiving bids. We'll do that April 8, 14, and set date of hearing for this public improvement of April 21st. The construction estimate is $80,000. Council Communication Number 14-122. Council member Gatto.
Yeah, I, you know, my biggest concern with this, this is the newest building that we've got. We have major concerns on the streets, especially in my ward and in other parts of the city of lack of apparatus, lack of firefighters, and I just, I have a major concern of turning around when we know that we need this, and I think most of us are probably in agreement of that, and we're going to turn around and spend money for a parking lot. Now, I've visited this facility twice, once for a neighborhood meeting, which there was plenty of parking, and once to meet with the chief, and I think I was the only car at 10 o'clock in the parking lot. So, I just have, I have major concerns. I think we should send it back to staff, review it, make sure that this is something that's needed. Otherwise, let's take this money and use it to put some folks on the street, which I think that's the biggest need that the city has right now.
Coleman?
I was able to speak with Councilman Gatto earlier, and I asked some questions. I think everybody got a copy of the, I just wanted to make sure everybody got that. I was unaware that the contract, even though it says it in the agenda, also includes money for another piece of equipment or something there. I'd like a little bit more information about the questions that I've asked. I want to be able to justify it. I've been supportive of the actions that the council has taken, you know, in terms of changes in the Fire Department, but I do like to be able to defend those, and having better information would help. So, he's already stated that he was going to vote no. I would rather delay it for a couple weeks, give us a chance to... I'll agree to delay it. And I would make that motion as opposed to having a decisive, divisive vote on it tonight, and being able to study it and get some more information on it. I'm particularly interested in this other piece of equipment that the state is allowing us to take, and interested in the amount of traffic that's there for other departments from the city. Those are pretty compelling reasons to be good to the neighborhood around there, but I'd like to know more about it before I voted to support the parking.
Skip, and then Christine.
Well, on the surface, I support this. Couple times a year, it seems like there's either training going on or some kind of large meeting, and the people do park out on Dean. But I have also heard from people on the south side about the lack of a medic unit where they would like one, and some other issues, and I do believe that we need to prioritize our funds that are going into the Fire Department, and I'm going to support Joe's motion to defer this and receive more information.
Christine?
I support the deferral to get more information. The question I have for the city manager with it, having, receiving a bid on April 8th, is that, does that create problems? Or how will that be handled?
If I could, Mrs. Hensley, council members, if the council votes to defer this for two weeks, we'll have to go back and work with Engineering and Fire. We'll simply revise those dates. That's not a, that's not a problem. We would delay the project for two weeks
Okay.
if council would approve. But I'd like to also say that I've had a chance to visit with Mr. Gatto. I believe I understand his concerns. We've also talked with Chief De Kip. Our intention is to see if we can figure out a way to address those concerns in a positive way that's within the confines of our budget, and we'll be happy to try to do that and report back to all of you in two weeks, and hopefully at that time, you'll have sufficient information to make a decision.
Okay. We have a motion to defer for two weeks and get some additional information back. Correct?
Yes.
Seven yes?
All right, that takes us to Item 20. Item 20 is on the proposed sale of city-owned property at 505 East Grand Avenue and 505 East Grand, 2505 East Grand LLC for $369,600. Again, that will, I think, this is setting date of hearing, and that hearing will be April 7th of 14. Council Communication Number 14-129. Joe, who's going to speak first? You or Christine?
I'll speak first.
Yep.
First of all, it's a great project. I see Jake sitting out here, and you know, I've had discussion with him, and you know, I love that what we're doing there, the most, and I've only been doing this a short time, but the few complaints that I've gotten is, what are we going to do about the parking in East Village? What's the, and I understand that we're doing a study of parking down there, but I guess my question is, is when is that going to be done? And is it going to be done before this is, you know, so we know, we know what direction we're going to go, or how's this going to work? And I guess I need that information to, you know, that's the biggest concern that I've had so far since I've been doing this such a short time, is the most emails.
Matt, did you want to address this, or do you want to listen to Christine's comment first?
Well, and I would just follow up on that, that I think it's important that maybe there's a meeting held with the stakeholders or the neighborhood association, so that there's some communication. I think a lot of it's lack of communication, and that that could happen before the actual hearing, which is on April 7th.
Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. To address the first question on timing. So, the parking study, the parking consultant will be in town the week of April 7th, and they'll be doing both field work and meeting with the stakeholders. So, I've just put Jennifer Boack in touch with Mark Tezak and Josh Garrett from Storky's Village, so they're working on getting those contacts, so that, what'll happen is, so they'll be doing actually the nuts and bolts field work of a parking analysis, but then also surveying the area businesses and area residents to understand their parking patterns and habits, and their customers' parking habits, and then holding larger group stakeholder meetings with the groups that Storky's Village puts together. So, we'll use HGV to get the word out to everybody that that's going on. I know Jake has had meetings with the Neighborhood Association and with the neighbors on the project itself, so the project's going through that process. And then, from a timing standpoint, the, there'll be, we'll have a draft of that parking study in May, and then the final one probably in June or July, midsummer. I think, as we've talked about this with traffic and transportation, one of the biggest, and I think communication and outreach is probably one of our biggest weaknesses in parking in these villages right now. It's not a lack of physical parking spaces. The parking spaces are there. I think it's signage, and it's working with the residents and businesses in understanding where to go park, and you can, there are ample parking spaces available, long-term metered spaces on Walnut Court and Des Moines Streets. You have the state parking ramp available that I know some businesses in the area use. It's free. And so, you know, it's an outreach and a marketing effort of getting people to use the parking spaces that are there. Everybody likes to park it in the front of their front door, but we need to, we need to kind of change some patterns and habits, and we're hoping that that's part of that recommendation that comes out of the parking study.
I'd ask, want to have the city manager make a comment on this, and Matt, thank you for stepping up. We had Jeff Speck come into Des Moines to talk about walkability in East Village and also in downtown, did a very extensive looksee and gave a report back to the city manager, and would you want to enlighten us a little bit on some of the thoughts and the processes that we should go through to discuss some of these parking issues, and how we make downtown more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly, more... more walkable, more pedestrian-friendly, more accessible, because it seems as though the popularity of downtown is ever-growing as we see all the development that people are interested in having downtown. And I think certainly we need parking, but I think we have to work on where and how that's provided. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, the good news is that East Village is booming, so you see a lot of desire for investments and space, and there's buildings construction, constructed right now. The good, the bad news is we have a lot of construction going on in East Village, and the inevitable byproduct of that is that parking lots just like this get used for development purposes, and the byproduct is that you have a lot of displaced parking that occurs out of that. So, our objectives here, and that's what Matt Anderson talked about in terms of the study, is that we have to find a way to meet that parking demand, but it's probably not going to be right next to where some of these spaces are. They're going to be, they're going to be a block or two or three away, but that's just what happens when you have an area like East Village that is doing so well. The mayor outlines some work that Jeff Speck has done for us. Jeff is a well-known urban expert that looks at how to make cities walkable. He has great ideas in terms of how to do that, and that's the kind of solution, the kind of process that we think could be very helpful in East Village as we go forward. So, it's one of these unique situations. There really is good news here with all the development occurring, but there is an adverse impact in terms of the displacement of the parking. The issue's been brought up. Skip has mentioned it too many number of times on behalf of constituents that he has, but the parking plan that Matt outlined is going to be a process that will identify how that solution can be met, and I think if you fold that in with some of the work that Jeff Speck has done for us in terms of how to make cities walkable, I think we'll come up with solutions that will work. It'll be different than what you have today. It won't be the same, but there are ways to do this, and I think frankly, unless we're willing to just stop all development over there, this is going to continue to be a need for us and a challenge for the city as we go forward.
Skip.
We've all had a lot of emails on this, phone calls. I've had people walk up to me on the street, and I'm going to support Jake's project. I think it's a great project. I think we're, there's a problem is that we got it backwards. This great construction we're going to be doing is what's eliminating the parking, which is causing the study, and I feel as though in the future we should be doing the parking studies in advance and bringing the stakeholders to the table to find out what they expect out of this. And there was an email that went out today that I got a phone call about, and the guy just couldn't figure out why in the world we'd want to make that alley over there between Walnut and Locust walkable. After we got done talking and he was educated on it a little bit, I think they understand what we're wanting to do on that, and that doesn't have anything to do with the parking, but it was an email that went out, and people are concerned about it. Why are we going to spend money to do something with an alley over there? And I just, everybody's wondering why we're giving up the parking before we do the study, and I do think that was a mistake on our part.
I think one of the things, Skip, that maybe we needed to roll into it is Jeff did look at parking as well as his walkability there. So, the staff has made some effort to do it, and I think it should maybe have been more descriptive and prescriptive if that's what you're looking for. I think that we certainly should put all the ideas out on the table. Charleston has a way to handle these kinds of things, and while their downtown looks very accessible and very walkable, there's a lot of parking down there, but it's hidden. People have to know how to use it, but I think this is worthwhile discussion to have, and good points by everybody. Jake, we support your. Yep?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jake Christensen, thank you for the discussion. Just wanted to touch on a couple of things. In preparation for this project, we worked diligently to talk with the neighbors about the impact of this project. We've developed in the East Village before. One of the reasons we like the East Village is that people care enough to speak up and say what's on their mind, and to me, that's a sign of a good neighborhood. So, it's worth every effort to go and find out what the situation is. So, we went and met with the Storky's Village Subcommittee, the deals and the issues related to essentially land in the East Village. We met with independent business owners, Brian and Mongo at the Saddle, Marcia Steele, the former president of the HEV at Found Things, Josh Garrett, the current president of the HEV, I'm forgetting a couple, but in all, oh, the Oriental Grocery Store directly to the east of the project. In all of those meetings, people were supportive actually of the change that was caused by the tax credit that you read in the paper, so they actually appreciated the reduction in some, in scale in some respects. The other thing is that we have about 14 spaces that will be, remain on the site after we construct the building, so we'll have an active use during the day, and then those parking spaces are available for business owners or participants and activities in the East Village to park in, so it won't be, won't be closed off. So, I think, much like many of the parking spaces that exist in the East Village, though there's an overlap that can occur, and I think any parking study would show East Village uses ample parking quite well. And just as a side note, I went to, when President Obama finished his campaign and closed it at East Fourth and Locust, there were approximately 10,000 people in the East Village. I parked four blocks away, and that was 10,000 people, so.
It was, I don't know that we want to give out the number, but it was way higher than that.
Okay. I still only parked four blocks away, and I believe that when projects happen in the East Village, and we have a significant number of wonderful projects coming to the East Village, it causes a ripple, and that changes how people operate. But to say we have a parking problem in the East Village, I think is disingenuous, and I think is a growing pain for a great neighborhood, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Great project.
And thank you for coming up. I think that everybody needs to understand that what we're doing here tonight is setting the date of hearing, so hopefully we'll get the Cliff Notes version of all this discussion at the next, when we actually have the hearing. So, thank you all. Can we get a motion to move this?
I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vows. Item moves forward. Item 24 is approving documents for a neighborhood commercial revitalization NCR program facade grant for renovations at 2932 Ingersoll Avenue for $15,000. Council Communication number 14-125. Mrs. Hensley.
Thank you. The reason I asked to speak on this is it's just an absolutely wonderful job of what they've done to this building on Ingersoll. It's the old blockbuster building, in case you're not familiar with the building, but I know there's an issue with the sign, and I just want to make sure that everybody's talking to everybody here, so that we're going to go ahead and do a grant, a facade grant, but there's an issue with a sign on this building, and I just, in the question I asked, it actually indicates that the staff recommendation to zoning board of adjustment is to deny the request on the basis that the applicant has failed to demonstrate the required hardship. So, is Jason out there? No. I guess I'd like to continue this until we've had the opportunity to get resolution to that and make sure that we, I want to work with him, but it just feels like we're giving somebody a grant when yet they're not working within the system to meet the guidelines for the sign requirements. So, I'd like to, I'll move that we continue this until the April 7th meeting. Seven, yes?
Okay. That takes us to item 2526. The council member Moore wishes to speak. I don't know that he wants to actually pull these. I think she just wanted to make a comment. Is that correct?
I just want to ensure that our residents in Des Moines realize what are going on with these two. Due to the excellent staff that the city has and the diligence with which they operate, they realize that we could redeem some bonds early and sell new bonds, resulting in a savings of approximately $1 million to our sewer fund. And I hope our residents realize that even though we're shorthanded, short-staffed, that our staff take their jobs very importantly, and this is a reflection of it. I know that I've seen people from finance at all hours of the day here. I can't believe the hours that they work, but this is the results of their work, and I just wanted to applaud our staff for doing this. And I'll move 25 and 26.
Well, you move 25, and let's vote on that. And.
Seven, yes?
No, I think move 26.
26.
Seven, yes?
All right, that completes the consent agenda and takes us to ordinances, first consideration. Item 34 is rezoning of 320 Creighton Avenue, Catholic Health Initiative Iowa, from R160, one-family low-density residential to CO, commercial residential, and to repeal ordinance 15,266 to correct an error in the legal description and A as a final consideration of the ordinance above the waiver is requested by the legal department and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to the rezoning at 320 Creighton Ave? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move 34, 34A. Seven, yes?
All right, that completes not only the consent agenda, but the ordinances, and that'll take us quickly, let's skip over to item 40, which is a submission of a Iowa flood mitigation program joint application with Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority, WRA, to the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Agency approving the project plan and approving a 28E agreement with the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority for the joint application for administration and funding of a project plan. Council Communication number 14-130. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this? Seeing none.
Mayor?
Mr.? Yeah.
Okay, let, no, let the manager speak first.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I just simply wanted to acknowledge fine work on the part of staff, Jeb Brewer and his staff in engineering, Scott Sanders, finance, public works, a lot of folks were involved in this. This is a wonderful initiative. It's a lot of work done very quickly. It is extremely significant to the city in the potential it offers to bring a lot of dollars to our city to help with what I think is a very high priority need, which is to address some of our flood improvement systems around the city. It's particularly important that this approach represents a joint collaborative effort between the city of Des Moines and the WRA, and that's a feature that brings to us some dollars that would not otherwise be available, but at the same time, it provides a very significant benefit to the WRA itself as well as the city of Des Moines. I'm happy to recommend it to you, but my hat's off to our staff who's done just absolutely first-rate work to get the application to the point it is here on your agenda and a position for us to submit this to the state. Hopefully, it gets approved, in which case it'll do some great things for the city and our ratepayers. So, thank you.
Skip.
This was presented to the WRA last week, and I want everybody to understand that there's approximately, Dave, is it 17 members to that? And when I hear from the residents in central Iowa that we don't work together, this is a great example that we do. There was very little discussion on this. The other 16-member committees voted for this, and I've got to commend staff. The way that it was put together and you presented it, sometimes you kind of hold your breath, but I was really impressed with the vote and everything. I'll move this item, 40.
Just a quick comment if I can, Mayor. I'm supportive as well. We haven't, we haven't used any numbers, because Skip, I totally agree with you. This is a great development. The staff preparing the project identified $255 million worth of sewer improvements that need to be made over 20 years, and a lot of times our residents will say, why are our property taxes higher here than other places around? You know, one of the reasons is our infrastructure is real old, and when, and we have to go in and improve it. Someday, the suburbs will have to, when theirs gets to be 60, 70, 100 years old. Right now, we have more old stuff, and this grant could produce nearly $100 million of that needed amount, and that all saves our taxpayers money. I think this is huge, and I compliment Skip, you, and the rest of the WRA board.
Right, has been moved.
Seven, yes?
All right. Item 41 is a selection of, an agreement with the Mercer Group, Inc., James L. Mercer, President and CEO, to provide executive search services for the selection of a new city manager. Council Communication number 14-115. James Wells has, is, he presented last, what, two weeks ago, James, sort of the process of looking through the various applicants to provide these executive search services for us. I think he followed that up with a good summary of all the applicants and talked to us about recommendations. He then did all the necessary checks and interviews, and I think that as a result, and I've talked to James about this, his recommendation, the Mercer Group, I fully support, and I want to thank him for the very intense work that he did on the background checks and everything else. So, James, I want to commend you for your work on this and hope that we get full support and can move forward as quickly as possible on this, on this search. By the way, I think that it is my hope, and I think that of the rest of this council, for those in our city that are listening, to go out and have some meetings in the various wards and talk to neighbors about what they look for in a, in a city manager and how the city is governed, and we'll have meetings also with our business owners, but we know that residents of the city of Des Moines always have a word of advice to give us, and we certainly want to have open ears to make sure that all their voices are heard as we make this most important selection. So. Which Chris wants to go first?
Go first.
Okay. I appreciate this is on our agenda, and James, thank you for doing the work. I will support it, and I do agree that we need to move forward. The clock is ticking. Our manager leaves in, well, about 60 days now, right?
Little over.
A little over 60 days.
Who's counting?
The, so I feel good about this. Mayor, you did say that, you know, we've talked about a plan for input at the front end before the job description is or, you know, promotion, I think they call it a job profile maybe in the materials that James presented. I'd like to think that the city personnel committee could add some insights into how that gets done and who we should ask to interview, and so I'll move this, but I'd like to make sure that our committee or the full council can get together and, you know, plan to be part of that process as well. But I'm really happy that we're at this point. I think that we're generally on the schedule that we set, and I know that we're exactly on the schedule that James gave us two weeks ago. I thought we weren't going to vote on this. In fact, Joe, I told you earlier today we weren't, and I got corrected, so I apologize for telling you that. This is important, and for those out there that question whether or not hiring a consultant is a good idea, I would say the value that James has been able to get for us on this is important. I've learned from our other searches that some candidates don't want to talk directly to the city. Information becomes public really quickly. They can't get some questions answered, and I think this gives us a chance for the first step, to have a little buffer and a communicator so that we attract the best possible candidates for this position. That's not to say the process won't be transparent on our end. I'm certain it will be, but I do think this first stage is really important, and we need to get at it.
Christine?
Couple of additional comments. Mayor, you made the comment that we need to go out to the stakeholders, the neighborhood people, but I think there's a whole list of stakeholders that we need to talk to, obviously neighborhood leaders, but also we have department heads, the staff here within City Hall, we have union. We have union representatives. We have the business community and the council, and I really feel that the council needs to be the driver on this process. Once we hire a consultant to come in, they're going to play a very important role, but I believe that we need to make sure that we are fully engaged in this process so that we're not just deferring to the consultant to let them be the ones to conduct the interviews. I think that all of us need to be involved in that process as we go throughout it, because we're the ones that are ultimately responsible for the hiring of this individual and have to make that final decision. So, that would be comment number one. My other comment, or I guess maybe it's a question for James, would be, as you looked at the, the different responses to the proposals, some of them actually had the number of times that they would visit the City of Des Moines to conduct those interviews, and with the Mercer Group being out of Santa Fe, New Mexico, obviously, that's a distance, but I think it's important that if we need them more than five or six times, that that's not an issue, that they are going to be able here to come here and really focus with us on conducting the interviews and working with us. So, I want to make sure that there's a clear understanding as to how many of those trips, and is that going to be included in the $8,000 expense item that's been listed there, or will there be additional expenses for more than four trips, five trips, whatever it is?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, James Wilson. That's an excellent observation, Councilmember Hensley, and it is something that we've, we talked with Jim Mercer about. He anticipates that it would be three to four trips to Des Moines, which is pretty consistent with the other proposals, but he has guaranteed us that he will make as many trips as needed to meet your expectations.
And so, that would be so if it ends up being five trips, it would still be the $8,000 out of pocket, or would there be additional?
It would, it would. His expenses, whatever, however many trips it would take for him to come would be included in the $8,000.
Okay.
The, what, what Mr. Mercer is looking at is coming onsite initially, that would be one trip. It could be two day, full days, meeting with the council members individually, department directors, and then anyone else that you would like the consultant to meet with.
Okay.
That's at your discretion. So, that would be for two days. And then, the next trip that he would make onsite would be after the recruitment period ends, and he has compiled all of the candidate information, and then comes back to you with that information and a recommendation on kind of that first cut. So, again, that 10 to 12 candidates. And so, that would be an onsite visit meeting with the council. And then, there would be, the, the next visit most likely would be with the, or for the onsite interviews. So, that would be three, three visits with probably four to five days.
And so, then, obviously, because that's the recommendation here, have you had a chance to visit with him regarding the timeline that you presented to us a couple of weeks ago?
Yes.
And he can, he feels comfortable with that timeline?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do I understand we got a fixed cost, so to speak, for his services?
We have a not-to-exceed cost.
Okay.
Yeah, this, I think it's $16,500 for the consultant fee, and then $8,000 in expenses.
So, when you say not to exceed, is it the $16,000 or the eight, or a combination of both?
Right. Good question. So, the $16,500 is a set fee.
Correct.
And then, it's a not-to-exceed, $8,000 in expenses. So, the most this search would cost the city is $16,500. That's for the consultant. Of course, the city would be responsible, responsible for paying the expenses of the candidates to come onsite, their airfare, if they fly, or mileage and hotel.
So, it's the $16,000 plus the $8,000?
Correct.
Correct.
So, that's $24,600 or something like that?
Yeah, $16,500 for the consulting fee, and then, not-to-exceed costs of another $8,000 in expenses.
Right. I just was.
Yep.
Doing the quick math here.
Yep.
Anybody else?
I think.
No question, yeah, right. Was, did Jim Wells, was he exclusively the one who chose the firm, or did we have other people sent in on the committee that did the search, for the selective search committee?
James, I think, at our workshop, kind of presented all the people that, that he had looked at that responded, and he spoke to, I don't know how many of them, but I know specifically two of them. He did tell me that he had talked to them. He talked to me specifically, but he has done these background searches and, and worked with these selection groups, and I let him pretty much do it, in, in which I, I asked him to report to the council as he walked through the process, which he has done.
I have no problem, Mercer. We've worked with them at Grand View University, and they did a good job for us over there. I was just.
There's, there's another recommendation to add to the list, right there.
I've met him before as well, and, and if we didn't say this, he's helped with jobs within the city before as well.
Yes, yeah.
So, James has firsthand knowledge.
Couple of times, '07 and '09.
So, I, I've moved this selection. I think it's time to move forward. We need to engage the council and stay on our, on our process forward. Specifically, I'd say, we, we normally would have gotten an update at the workshop this morning, and I'd like to think that we will continue to schedule those workshops, and if we don't have a workshop for some reason canceled, which I hope, I hope we continue to have them, this alone is worth having those Monday workshops every other week to stay on track, but I, but I do think we need to move ahead. And my recollection is, manager, that one of the things on our list of things to do is potentially identify an interim manager. Your request, I think, was, don't, they don't get the job as interim, but we designate him that so they can work side by side. So, sometime in the coming weeks, we will do that.
Well, I'm hopeful that, that we can have that discussion amongst, amongst the seven of us between now and maybe even the next meeting, so that we could have that on the agenda for the next time. So, I'm hopeful that we can have all seven of us involved in that, that discussion.
Good.
It's unusual we didn't have a workshop, but due to the schedules of people that were gone, they didn't.
Yeah.
Staff time available to get everything ready, so.
Yeah, I wasn't being critical of the decision. I just hope that we can, through this process.
Seven yes?
Yeah, and I'm reminded that we, we need to stay in, in line with all the legal process so that we aren't in violation of any open meetings laws that is set out by all those folks that pass these great rules up on the hill up here, and so, we want them to know that we're going to follow those rules explicitly. Let's move back to item 35 and open our hearings at 5:13. Item 35 is on the 2013 U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, that CAPER. Is there anybody here to speak on the CAPER? I don't see anybody jumping up. Could we have a motion to accept?
I'll move.
I'll move, yep.
The consolidated annual performance and evaluation report.
Seven yes?
Item 36, on the conveyance of a portion of vacated East West Alley right-of-way adjoining 1709 Francis Avenue to Olga Marina Ayaya, $25, Council Communication number 14-121. Is there anybody in the audience to speak to this item? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move.
Mayor, I'd like to just touch base on this first. As a former city employee, I'm very well aware of the fact that we've created islands of alleys all over the city. There's been numerous times, they're, they're used for illegal dumpings. There are small pieces of property where somebody didn't buy the alley, and we've got zero access to get in and clean it out. Then, you've got to beg, borrow, and steal from the adjoining property owners to cross their property to get in and clean it up. We had one in the Martin Luther King neighborhood where it was about 100-foot-tall cottonwood that died, and we had zero access to get into it, but we owned that piece of property. And it took us about six months to get permission to get in and get, get that tree out, and I just want to ensure that when we're selling these pieces of alley this way, that you can see here, we've created some islands by the way it jogs back and forth, and I want to ensure that that's not happening in the future. I know the people that used to sell the alley rightaways were well aware of that and changed their policy, and I just want to ensure that that policy is still in place, because it can really put Public Works at a disadvantage when there's an issue in one of these parcels. And I'll move this one. I guess, sorry, Ben, move.
Six yes?
Item 37, on the Greenwood Park Shelter renovation is a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and the designation of the lowest responsible bidder as Bryan Crow Construction, Inc., Jerry Crow, President, $234,150. Council Communication number 14-128. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item?
I'll move item 37, 37A.
Seven yes?
Item 38, on Park Avenue Railroad Crossing Improvements at Southwest 56th Street, a resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, and designation of the lowest responsible bidder as Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, Kurt Rasmussen, President, $48,200. Council Communication number 14-126, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? A repair and improvement on Southwest 56th Street and?
Park Avenue.
Park Avenue.
I'll move 38, 38A.
Rail crossing.
Seven yes?
Okay. Item 39, on the South Union Street Bridge over Yater Creek Rehabilitation, the resolution approving the plan specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, designation of the lowest responsible bidder as Kramer and Associates, Inc., Robert Kramer, President, CAO, $296,383.40. Council Communication number 14-127, A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Is there anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Right, seeing none, could we have a motion?
Quick comment before, I've had a lot of people this week come in, and they've got a, got a board up that says South Union's going to be closed for four months. I'd just like to see some better communication. Obviously, I, you know, just the short time that I've been here, but that's, that's one of the biggest things that I think that we need to, you know, we, we need to have better communication. I mean, they're closing a major thoroughway through, through the south side for four months, and, you know, if, obviously, these things are great, and it's, it's a great project, and it needs to be done, but, you know, the neighborhoods and the neighborhood associations need to know about it, and we need to have the word out, other than just putting a sign up for, for two weeks and, and, you know, hey, it's going to be closed for four months, and nobody understands why.
Yep. Mr. Manager, we used to have a way we could call neighbors and let them know stuff like this and remind them, send it out in a city newsletter. How would you suggest, at this moment, we address some of those communication needs?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Gatto's comments are very appropriate. We do have a system to, to comment or to communicate with residents. It includes the items you mentioned, Mayor, but maybe we need a fresh look at that and see what we can do to make sure there's, there's really good communication on it. It is indeed, as you suggest, I think, if people know it's coming, even if it's not the most desirable thing in the world, I think they feel better about it. So, we will take a look at our system for communicating on these things, and we'll do everything we can. We've done a pretty good job in the past with it, but there's always, I think, room for improvement, so we'll see what we can do, and we'll give you a report back as to the kinds of things that we will try to implement here, so you kind of know what's going on, and we're, we're always going to be open to your suggestions about ways to improve that.
Thank you. I'll move 39 and 39A.
It's tough, you get elected to the council, you gotta, you gotta vote to shut down the road to your business. Appreciate that. Ouch.
All right. Let's note that the hearings close at 5:20, and could we have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
We need to have a, we're going to have a voice vote on this one, folks. This is okay. All in favor, say aye.
Can I call for a roll call? Is that my right?
Oppose.
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you all for attending.[1743.86]